All right. Good morning, everybody. It's now 10:00 a.m. We will call to order the meeting for Tuesday, February 8th, 2022. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. At this time, we will welcome public comment for items that do not appear on our agenda. Is there any public comment at this time? Okay. If there's any public comment for items that are on our agenda, we will accept them when they are under consideration. At this time, we look for a motion to add anything to the agenda. Anything that needs to be added? Okay. Seeing none. We'll move into our minutes. We have a work session, some work sessions, and our meeting from last week. Is there a motion to approve those meetings and work sessions?
Motion to approve the minutes from the Board of Commissioners' meeting and work sessions.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. The motion has carried. Okay. Moving into proclamation number three of 2022, we're going to welcome up some very special guests. And to introduce some of them, we're going to welcome up Mary Ann Volders from CPI. We're very excited to have you all here today, and Mary Ann will allow you to do the introductions. Please, welcome.
Do you want from here or are we sitting?
Whatever you're most comfortable with. Yeah, whatever you're most comfortable with.
But if I just start here.
Sure. Okay. Sounds good.
Well, thank you, Board of Commissioners, for having us today. It's always our pleasure to come here and represent CPI. With us today, we have two students, Maya Barton, and I'll let her talk about herself, and Ashley Dietrich, who is a graduate, and I'll let Ashley talk about herself. And I could stand here and tell you all the things going on at CPI, but part of CPI and part of CTE Month is letting other people get some accolades as well. So I'm going to ask our school counselor, Mr. Heverly, actually, to do that today. You know, grow your own, grow within. So I'd like him to do that today. So who would you like to start with? Gary, Maya, or Ashley?
Time is yours, please. Whatever you think would be best.
Well, then let's start with the students. They're more important than Mr. Heverly.
Sounds good. Sounds good. Sounds good. Okay.
Hello.
Good morning.
I'm Maya Barton. I go to Baldigo Area, and I attend CPI for the Early Childhood Education class. And the reason I chose to go CPI was because it allowed me to figure out what I was going to do after high school, which I'm going to attend Penn State for elementary education. And while I attend there, I'm going to work at a daycare because I got my hours I needed from CPI. So it was just a really rewarding, it's a rewarding program, and I love it there.
That's fantastic. Thank you, Maya. Thank you. Good morning. Hello.
Good morning. I'm Ashley Dietrich. I graduated from the Practical Nursing Program in December of this past year from CPI. I'm currently working as an LPN at Juniper Village Wellspring, and I just accepted another position at Geisinger Lewis Town Hospital as well. I chose CPI because through all my years of schooling and being in healthcare, I heard about how competitive and just excellent their education is. And I have to say, it's unrivaled compared to everywhere else in the area. I think career in technology is important, not only for high school students, but also adults trying to further their career. I think that it's important. It helps us build better, more beautiful communities. You come out of a career in technology school with hands-on skilled instructors who have had real-life experience in what they're teaching you. And overall, CPI was just a wonderful school, and career in technology education is very important, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning. Thanks for having us. I'd just start off by saying what I say to everybody else. With CPI, there's a myth about the type of people that go out there. And I always tell parents and students, the students you see at your high school are the students we have at CPI. We have students who are really struggling in school. We have students who are doing very well and striving in school. We have AP Honor students. Most of our students are in between. So it's a good school for students struggling to find their way. I also tell students that the best thing you can do is take a strong academic schedule and come to CPI and get some credentials. It just doubles your versatility of where you can go in life. We're really happy that things are opening up. We're starting to get people back in the building. We had about 500 students over the past couple of weeks come visit from our sending schools, Bellefonte, Penns Valley, Baldigo Area, excuse me. And we're having some students return next week again to do some career tours. So what they do is they come through our building, they see every program in the morning. In the afternoon, they go back and revisit a program for a half an hour at three different places. So it gives them an idea of what they can do at CPI. One thing we started to do this year was we took our high school students who are already in the building, we took them around to our post-secondary programs to do the same thing with them. So last week, they saw all the post-secondary programs, and some of them did not know what was there for us to offer them. So it was really nice, and we have about a hundred, over 100 students going back, starting today, to look at our post-secondary programs to see if they want to return to CPI as an adult student. Our goal is 20%. That's what we want to do to get them coming back. So that's a really good thing for our students. And I just want to share a conversation I was part of yesterday. A student came to our Cooperative Education person, who's Mr. Bill Luther, talked about why he went to CPI. He said, I looked at, I weighed the options. I saw I could go to a two-year school, pay $50,000, or I could come here for 10 months and pay about $13,000. I'm going to work faster, and I don't have to worry about all the other stuff. I can get to work and start making money, and I'm going to make about the same amount of money when I start. So that's just something really important for people to know as well. Anybody have any questions?
Which area of expertise do you have, Mr. Heverly?
I'm a counselor. That's, yeah. I would say I work well with people of all sorts.
Great skill.
Yeah. And, you know, I love CPI. I've worked in the high schools. I've worked in some psychiatric places, been supervised at different places, but no place compares to working at CPI and the people that work in that building and the students that come in that building. So it was a really good career change for me seven years ago, and I'm glad to still be there.
Wonderful. Thank you.
The passion and purpose that CPI puts out in the community and the folks that work there and learn there is incredible. And every year, we're so excited for February. We know that you're going to share amazing stories, success stories, future success stories. We're so excited. So thank you for your time today and all the work you do. I know each of my colleagues will certainly have some comments as well. Please.
Sure. Well, it's wonderful to have people here from CPI. We also have South Hills as well, two great schools right here in Center County. Maya reminds me a bit of my daughter because she's also in elementary, well, actually, she's in education. She's more secondary for high school. But great career, obviously, huge shortage of teachers right now, and you're in a fast track to, A, know what you're doing once you get in the classroom, and you've been paid to learn those skills, which is wonderful. And of course, for Ashley, obviously, huge shortage of nurses. You're not only, it sounds like you got a job pretty much the day you graduated, but you're now expanding your career options. And some of the other programs that they have at CPI, the natural gas compressor degree, which I think, Mary Ann can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the graduates pretty much have jobs by the first year of a two-year program.
You were talking about that. You graduated from that program, and you started $100,000 immediately after.
Right. So you have a job offer one year into a two-year program, and if it's not six figures, it's threatening it pretty strongly. Another program that I think all three commissioners have participated in is the heavy equipment program, which is also very interesting, and very few schools have something like that. So, yeah, for students who want to make money quickly, who want to get in the workforce fast, or just want to say, well, what would it be like to be something? I can do that in a year or two at CPI, and then if I like it, great, I can get a four-year degree. So wonderful to have you here. Thanks.
I think it's important to note that a few of the areas, particularly the building trades, are very strong right now as folks exit the workforce, and we need to backfill them. Whether you're a plumber or welder, whether you're a carpenter, you know, pick the HVAC, pick the area. I mean, those are all pretty plum jobs once you get out, and there's certainly no shortage of them. And CPI has been right there to make sure that those positions are filled. Most importantly, and probably most wonderfully, is a lot of those folks can stay here in Center County and work. And, you know, you don't have to always jet off to another state to find employment. You can find it right here. And particularly, well, the nursing, we'd like to keep all you guys local. That would be wonderful. But all the programs in the secondary, the post-secondary, and the school-age kids, I mean, it's just, there's so many opportunities out there, and it's really fantastic. And whether you're prepping yourself for a college career, or whether you're going to go out into the workforce right afterwards, there's opportunities for you. So congratulations and thank you. And it's our honor to make sure that the world knows how wonderful CPI and South Hills is here in Center County.
So once again, thank you all. We are going to now look to adopt the proclamation at this time.
Well, an enthusiastic motion to adopt proclamation number three of 2022 proclaiming February as Career and Technical Education Month in Center County.
Well, seconded. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on this? Hearing none? All in favor say aye. Aye. The motion is carried. And so we can maybe come along this side and present a proclamation to you. If that's okay.
Very nice to meet you, Mary Ann.
Yeah, just nice to meet you, Ashley.
No problem.
I do not need to be in there. No, no, it'd be great if I, I'll just back up.
She wasn't smiling in that picture.
Absolutely. Thank you all very much.
Thanks for coming.
Next, we're going to move into a really very exciting announcement. We've been working behind the scenes, our Planning and Community Development Office, many stakeholders here in Center County. And so we're very excited to welcome up Liz Luce from our Planning and Community Development Office, our Assistant Director, with some exciting news again on our strategic plan and in public survey. Good morning, Liz.
Good morning. Yeah, today marks the official press media release announcement for the online survey component for the broadband strategic plan. This officially went live yesterday. We gave it a couple of days to make sure that all the bugs were worked out. We just want to give kudos to CTC. We've been working in conjunction with them for the last two weeks. They got the survey together. We've tested it, added some additional components to it. So we are really excited, and we are looking forward to as many responses to this as we can get. So the most important thing is, the website for this is centercountypa.speedsurvey.org. The online survey, it will take residents and businesses less than five minutes to take the survey. We've tested it internally. So we just are asking for, you know, as many responses to this survey as we can get. This is really a critical component because this is going to help CTC backfill the data that they need to perform the assessment, to make sure that we are getting the proper locations, the internet speeds reflected in the survey. And it's also an opportunity for residents and businesses to weigh in on their satisfaction with their internet, as well as what the price range of the services that they're paying for. We also want to recognize as well that for residents that don't have reliable internet or have no internet at all, we are also developing, which will be made available online through the broadband page for Center County, a paper survey. I just want to recognize our senior planner, Peter Butler. Peter did an excellent job at getting the paper survey drafted, and we are going to get this sent out to all of our municipal partners, as well as other stakeholders throughout this process. I just want to give kudos again then to our municipal partners. They've been very responsive and supportive of this effort. They are willing to help, you know, spread the word on your behalf, as well as put the paper survey on their websites, and play a role in the distribution and collection of this information. This is really a one-time opportunity for residents to really play a direct role in planning by responding to the survey. They are actually helping their community, you know, and every point that we collect is going to help CTC determine if an area is truly served, unserved, or underserved by broadband internet. So the survey is going to be open online up through March 25th. CTC has advised us that most surveys, you get most of the responses within the first two or three weeks. We are allowing some additional time in the event that, you know, people are slow to respond to the survey, especially from the paper component. That also allows us on the back end to get this information and compile and get it in a timely manner back to CTC. Just being mindful that they too are on a timeline to actually produce the plan. Given that information, do you have any questions then this morning?
I think, Liz, you've really demonstrated the need for this through the various meetings we've had. We know that we, the goal is faster internet in Center County. That's really what, in more places. We want to get as much increase in speed in more places, even in some of the places that may consider having fast internet. We just want to get more. And also, this is, again, like you said, it's like a broadband census. We really want to make sure that people are filling out this information so that we can make good decisions when the data comes available. And there's $100 million at the state available for broadband that we want to be able to get. We have American Rescue Plan money that we can leverage. So this is an excellent time for all those people who have called in, emailed, written us, written the Planning Office, saying, you know, what can we do to get faster broadband? Well, this is a huge first initial step as we're going after that money. So please, take the time, fill out the survey in all parts of the county. Really would love to hear the responses. But if there's any questions or comments, please.
Well, actually, I'll slightly disagree with you, Mike. This isn't a first step. Center County is one of the leaders in the state for rural broadband. Due to the hard work of Liz and Peter and Ray in the Planning Department, Margaret Gray in Administration, and our 911 Emergency Communications, we rolled out broadband almost two years ago now in Penns Valley, right before the pandemic hit. We're serving 800 families there. That Center County model is now being replicated statewide. A number of Sedecog Counties just to the east of us have rolled out the Center County model. And I was talking with one of the Chester County Commissioners, they've used the Center County model to roll out higher-speed broadband in their rural areas. And now, though, as you were mentioning, Mike, this is a historic opportunity because we have the ability to utilize well over, hopefully, $100 million at the state level. We have our American Rescue Plan money we can utilize to leverage additional funding. There was a round of FCC grants covering portions of Center County where those particular suppliers are just waiting for somebody like Liz to organize things, get the data from our residents, show what areas where we do not have broadband, where we have it, but it's really slow. Or example now in areas like Milheim, now that they had the ability to receive high-speed broadband, Atlantic broadband has moved in and is now offering service there as well. So it's a wonderful time. I'm very pleased at all the work that has been done, not just by planning, but by 911 and Administration. Just very excited. And thanks, Liz, for the hard work. Could you give us that website again, though?
The website is centercountypa.speedsurvey.org.
Great. Thanks.
Thanks, Liz. I think this demonstrates our commitment to making sure that Center County has the broadband service that it needs. And is, one of the things that we've learned from the pandemic is whether you're in education or whether you're in just the private sector out there trying to get the word out, it's very difficult if you, if you don't have the capability. And from a business standpoint, from an education standpoint, from a governmental standpoint, high-speed broadband is a huge asset to any community. And for us to develop some of our more rural places in our county, it's just going to be an absolute requirement. So whatever we can do to provide that, you know, I know there's lots of ways you can connect up to the internet, but if we can get real fiber cable out into some of the rural communities, that would be fantastic, you know. High-speed, high-speed internet is really where it's at. And I think as we move forward over the next couple decades, that'll just be, you know, just exponentially more important. So I look forward to working with you and your staff and the folks within all the county to make sure that we promote this as.
Any questions for Liz before we?
What is CTC?
Please, yeah.
Oh, CTC Technology and Energy is the consultant with whom we contracted for the broadband strategic plan.
They're one of the best-known consultants in the field. And Liz, I think you said they not only work with counties, they even work with states as well.
Yes, they have. CTC has a great reputation for delivering a product that actually leads to implementation. Our interaction thus far, Peter and I, with CTC staff, they have proven to be the best of the best. And they're just a pleasure to work with. So, you know, we're finding, and CTC is finding too, because Center County is so geographically large and diverse, that this is going to be, it's going to prove to be one of the more interesting projects that they have worked on.
We're excited by that. Very excited. Yeah. Any other questions? Okay. All right. Liz, thank you so much once again. We'll look forward to hearing an update in a few weeks, okay?
Great.
Thank you. Okay. We are going to welcome up our Elections Director, Beth Leckman, and we have our opening of the responses for the RFP. So this is going to be a little anticlimactic today. But Beth, we appreciate you being here. And I know, we can give some context to this, so please.
So I'm slightly disappointed that we did not receive any bids to open. We did receive one, but it happened to arrive late. That could have been due to the weather last week. So we will make a plan, regroup, and discuss other options, or, you know, where we will move forward with the process for the mail-in ballots.
I think, you know, nobody, it's not a secret that not only are we dealing with a potential constrained timeline due to some of the redistricting that's going on, the federal and state level, but also there's some court challenges as well with the vote by mail. And so as those things are providing a little bit of uncertainty, you know, some of these companies may be a little hesitant to take on new clients, but I do think that we typically have seen a lower amount of requests in the primary elections for mail-in ballots or absentee ballots. So really confident that you can develop a strategy for how we can tackle that. And as we move into the general, there's not going to be as much, I guess, uncertainty, you could say. So I think we'll have a better footing there. So, but at least we know where we're going from this standpoint. We'll, again, like you said, regroup, discuss. But we appreciate all the work that you put into this because this will really serve us, this RFP, in the future in many ways. So, you know, this is just one step to inventing a light bulb. So we'll get there. We'll get there. But any other thoughts on this?
Thanks for the hard work of you and your stuff, Beth. We'll give it another try here once the dust settles.
Well, I would suggest that we contact our solicitor and find out what the process is. You know, we've put it out in good faith for an RFP and whether or not we can negotiate with individual vendors to perhaps, you know, come up with a solution to this, even for the primary.
That's a possible option. And then there's some other things. I was looking at CoStar's agreements as well. So I'm going to look for the printers that are available on the CoStar. So I'll have more information on that.
Yeah, we've done, we've made a good faith effort to reach out for proposals, and with none coming, I think that opens us up for a conversation with individual vendors to provide the services if we so choose.
I don't think that's a bad idea. Absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, sounds good. Okay. Thank you, Beth, very much. Appreciate it. So if we didn't get any bids, or I'm sorry, if we didn't get any responses to this RFP, is any action really needed? We don't need to take any action on this? Okay.
Not at this point.
Yeah, no actions to take. Okay. All right. All right. So we'll move on. We're going to welcome up our controller, Jason Moser, and I believe that we have a request for RFP or professional service. Yes. Good morning, Jason.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you, Commissioners, for having me. In front of you today to request your approval in requesting statements of qualifications from consulting firms to assist the county in the completion of the selection and implementation of new Enterprise Resource Planning, or ERP, software. Just a little background, oftentimes, we talk about that software as, you know, the accounting software for the county, which it is. It's the financial backbone, but it also houses our payroll, our HR. And a lot of the softwares these days can do multitude of other services that we don't currently take advantage of. And it's a big project because we're not selecting this software. It's not one you go out and get every two years. It's one that we select probably for the next 20 to 25 years with incremental updates, of course. So it would make sense, I think, in the people that have been discussing it, to have a consultant come in and help the county move through that process and select that software.
Any questions or comments?
I just want to thank Jason. I used to be kind of in that field years back, and it's very difficult, very complicated. And I just want to thank you and your staff for the research to find a couple of consultants who are in this field and know county government or government in general. So I think it's a great idea.
Sounds good. Okay. All right. We will look for a motion then.
Motion to approve the request for professional services.
Seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye. Aye. The motion is carried. Okay. Thank you, Jason. Sure, sure. Okay. We're going to welcome up Anne Masner at this time for another request for professional services. Good morning, Anne.
Good morning, Commissioners. The purpose of this is, we are now in the next phase of our bridge bundle projects, and so we need to move forward with inspection services. So today, requesting statements of interest for professional engineering services to inspect the construction of bridges that are going to be rehabbed, which are three, and two that are going to be replaced.
So for a total of five bridges in this project. Okay. All right. Okay. Any questions or comments?
I just want to thank you for your hard work on this, Anne. I know we've changed the funding structure a couple of times, even while you've been here, just to sort of maximize the local match. But great to see that we're going to be moving forward with rehabbing three locally-owned bridges and replacing two of them. That's a lot of bridges, and that's a pretty fair fraction at this point of the bridges we have that are in poor condition in the county, structurally deficient, whatever the current term is.
Yeah, or closed as well.
Or closed. At least one of them's closed.
Yes, one is closed.
Yeah. So obviously, that needs to be reopened as soon as we can. So it's wonderful. Thanks again for your hard work on this.
All right. We will look for a motion then.
Motion to approve the request for professional services to inspect multiple bridge rehabilitation and construction projects.
Same. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none? All in favor say aye. Aye. The motion is carried. Okay. We'll see you back up in a few minutes. Thanks, Anne. Thank you. Okay. For our copier and lease services, I believe that we're going to welcome up Julie Luss from our Finance Office, and also Chad Joyce. And we are going to consider again a request for proposals. So good morning to both of you. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, Margaret Gray, and everyone else.
We are here today to talk about a request for proposals to provide a lease for copiers/multi-function printer equipment and a full-service maintenance and supplies agreement for all county buildings. Currently, the county has 64 copiers, seven of which offer color printing. We also have three wide-format machines that we lease. These copiers serve 570 employees across more than 45 departments located in 11 county offices. We have been in a relationship with our current vendor since August of 2011, with the last year being a 12-month extension because of the COVID situation. The county requests proposals for a 16-month lease. This copier contract will be a big deal. Bill, it is important to provide our employees with the tools and technologies they need to get the job done for Center County. This county will typically make over 3 million copies a year. In addition, we also do functions of faxing and scanning on all of our copiers. Our current vendor does an excellent job at providing service maintenance. They are very attentive to our needs, and our machines have very They are very attentive to our needs and our machines have very little downtime. The standard has been set and the bar is high. We will accept nothing else but outstanding service. And so although price, of course, is very important, other factors will be taken into consideration. Proposal documents may be obtained beginning today, Tuesday, February 8th, during the normal business hours from the Center County Commissioner's Office. Proposals also may be requested via email by contacting procurement@centercountypa.gov. Dates worth highlighting, submittal deadline will be Friday, March 18th, 2022 by 4:00 p.m. Opening of submitted proposals is March 22nd, 2022. A notice of contract award is set for April 12th of 2022. The county's point of contact for this RFP will be Julie Lutz, Financial Operations Coordinator, 814-355-6700, or email procurement@centercountypa.gov. Please note that there are other important dates and schedules, all located within the RFP. And the county will make every effort to adhere to all the schedules. Do you have anything to add, Chad?
I do not. That was a very robust overview, so.
Yeah, Julie, this is such a, like you said, a key component of what we do. It's one of the things we sort of take for granted, but when it doesn't work. We come knocking on your door and we've gotten, you know, so this is a really, a really good opportunity for us to take a look at the field, see what other, what type of, you know, responses we'll get. So thank you for, for organizing this and presenting today. We appreciate it very much.
Yeah, thanks, Julie, for being so thorough. I did not know we made 3 million photocopies plus all the other documents as well every year. Oh, my goodness.
Yeah, we're not quite to the paperless point yet, I see. So, okay, well, let's sharpen our pencil and see who's out there wants to provide a service. That's great.
All right. So we would look for a motion then.
Motion to approve the advertisement of request for proposals, copier lease services.
Seconded. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any final questions? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye? The motion is carried. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chad.
Okay, at this time, we'll welcome up our chief public defender, Dave Crowley. And this is a contract with Abacus Next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Getting old, it's getting to help to stand up.
No worries.
You're doing great.
Well, we had just sitting there for a while.
Public defender represents about 2,000 people a year here in Center County. That's, that's a five-year average. It's dipped a little in these COVID times. But of those 2,000 clients, we schedule about 5,000 hearings and 3,000 meetings with clients, police officers, whatever. To keep track of all that scheduling, to keep track of the tens of thousands of documents generated emails, that's where we are. Despite the copies we make, we, the state is forcing us to rely more on electronic filings and things like that. We're in a kind of a transition period. But to keep track of all the scheduling, all the documents generated, and to be able to reconstruct reports on time spent on these activities so that we can get reimbursements from Children's Youth Services for the dependency stuff, and also the stuff we do at Rockview is, is at least partially reimbursable by either the state or other counties. We've been depending since 1994 on a calendaring and case management software system called Abacus. And for the first 20 years, it was just great. It did everything we asked. We moved from a DOS platform to Windows, which was really helpful because it allowed attorneys, in addition to secretaries, to input their own, own data into this remarkable system. But over the last five years or so, it's, it's sluggish. It's been crashing quite a bit. And we've been prompted to move to the cloud. And for the last three years, Chad, my secretarial staff, and I have been exploring alternatives to deal, to give us a better product that, that works more efficiently for us, and also to satisfy the county and my office with security issues. We looked at five other programs and came to the realization that we should be moving to Abacus's upgraded platform on the cloud there, Abacus Next. Chad has been very helpful in negotiating what we think is a favorable contract. And we'd ask the board's consideration to keep us afloat by, by signing this five-year contract.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Any questions, comments?
No.
No?
Actually, there is, there is one. Just out of curiosity, you had mentioned Rockview, but what kind of impact does having two SCI's in the county have on your office and on the criminal justice system?
It ebbs and flows. Five years ago, we were doing 200 mental health commitments hearings out there a year. Then they took that away. But the state parole stuff is picking up. I mean, it's, it's basically a full-time job for, for one of us. We, we have eight attorneys, six of them are in criminal court, and Rockview and Benner do have criminal cases coming out of them, which we're responsible for. Maybe 30 a year. Possession of drugs is contraband in an institution. It's a secondary felony, even if the substance is the box zone, which is supposed to help you deal with your cravings from heroin addiction. They can prescribe it there, but if you pick it up on your own off the street, it's a felony too. And it's, it's something we, we have to deal with. Possession of weapons is, is something else. Assaults are, are something else. Probably about 30 a year of those. In addition to that, the, the state courts decided back just before I started in 1985, that we're responsible for all the state parole, parole violators going through hearings or administrative appeals at the institution. And when it was just Rockview, that was a fair, fair portion of our business. They've added Benner. And for a while there, they were, everybody was waiving their hearings because they were promised things by their state parole agents in Philadelphia or wherever they came from. Lately, even though the state contracted with Huntington County to do all the hearings there at SCI Smithfield, what we've been experiencing since that contract went through was that they do the first level hearing at Smithfield, and then they ship them out to Benner or Rockview, and then we're picking up the hearings at that point. So our numbers there are going up. They've replaced the mental health unit at Rockview with an Alzheimer's unit. And we've been doing some medical guardianship type cases with the court for that. So it's, it's, it's almost a full-time job just doing the state parole stuff for, for one of our attorneys.
And it's worth noting that your office, as part of the criminal justice system, is the only office of that whole, of that whole sector that reports to the Commissioners.
And it has been a pleasure to report.
Everybody else reports to the courts, but you.
Don't get to see you guys enough.
Yes, that's what I was going to say. You're always welcome. So, thank you.
How are the new digs?
Well, I was there in, in 1987. And it's a lot more elbow room. I'm at this place that was occupied by a copier and three secretaries and a bunch of typewriters. It was before they added computers. But I love my office and I thank you every day. And I thank Tom Young for getting me very nice furniture. I'm not so sure we needed a room to do your analysis test or a holding cell, but you, you work with what you got.
You have it if you need it.
Some days we might.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Absolutely. Thank you, Dave, very much.
Always a pleasure.
We will look for a motion then.
Motion to add the contract with Abacus, Abacus Next to next week's consent agenda.
Seconded. All right. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve today's consent agenda.
I would like to separate number seven out from the, from the list, if you would be so kind.
So actually, so yeah, so actually, it is a separate item. So consent agenda is number six.
Okay. All right.
Yeah. So the consent agenda would just be A, B, C.
Actually, I think consent is 11, and liquid fuels is 12.
Oh, you're right.
Okay. It is 5x is 10. I was figuring Latin in high school.
That's okay.
Okay, that is 12. That's what happens when you don't put glasses on.
That's okay. Okay. So just, just the items for mission critical, Pima, mission critical, human services planning. Okay. So.
I will second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye? The motion is carried. Okay. All right. And Ann will welcome me back up.
Good morning again.
Good morning.
Today, you have before you a resolution for your consideration for extending ordinance two of 2017 for five years, additional five years for the fee for local use, or as other people know, $5 fee for each non-exempt vehicle registered in Center County. The PennDOT has asked for this resolution, so they have an understanding of what to do. And I'm asking for your consideration and possible adoption of the resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Ann. We appreciate all the work that you've put into this. It's been a long road for us to discuss this, look into it, gather data. And so we're here today and we appreciate the, the work very much. Just echoing some comments I've made in previous meetings about the importance of fixing our infrastructure here in Center County and across the state, across the country. We know that it's needed more than ever. And I think one of the big things that we've talked about is leveraging funds. And today is an example of us leveraging some municipal funds with the, if we approve the motions for the six projects, we're going to be leveraging close to a half a million dollars of local funds in a combination of about a quarter million dollars of the $5 fee for these six projects listed here. And I think it's exciting. We've done over a dozen of these over the last several years with the $5 fee. And so, you know, really, the impact, I think, is really striking. In addition, we're going to have the opportunity to leverage some more federal dollars and state dollars with the bipartisan infrastructure law that was passed. There are tens of billions of dollars that'll be available for transportation. We already know that we're getting a little bit of an increase at the MPO for transportation projects over the next four years, over $5 million at least, maybe more. And so, again, leveraging dollars is going to be really crucial. And as we go throughout the next several years with this fee for local use, we're going to continue to see municipalities here with projects getting funded. And we know the need is there. We continue to not be able to have enough liquid fuels money. So I think the impact has been positive over the last five years with this. Looking forward to another five years. And again, whomever's are the, in these chairs at that point can make a determination about whether they want to extend it or not. But I think enough evidence has come in that it's still needed. And again, if we don't fix it now, we're going to fix it later at a higher price.
Great summary, Mike. I think I'll just add a few more numbers. With the money we've committed so far from the first batch of the $5 fee, we have leveraged an additional $4 of state and federal money. So every dollar we collect from the $5 fee turns into $5 of total transportation spending. As you mentioned, Mike, there's now billions of additional dollars available just in Pennsylvania for projects. And I think the people at home don't understand, if you have a million-dollar bridge repair, the state doesn't give you a million dollars. They don't. If you want any money from the state, you have to come up with some percentage of that yourself, whether it's a quarter of the money, or a half the money, or 20% of the money. The state doesn't just give you the cash. And then also, Mike, you alluded to the fact that our municipalities, every year, like clockwork, say we have between a million to $2 million, not of projects, but of local match money we'd like the county to help us with. And the liquid fuels dollars we receive to help them with that is anywhere from $160,000 to $210,000. So the requests that we receive annually from the 35 municipalities in Center County is multiple times the amount of money the state of Pennsylvania gives us. And the Republican State Legislature passed this several years ago with an eye to counties being able to assist their local municipalities in repairing the roads. And to your point, Mike, if you need to repair the bridge today, and you don't, and you put it off for another five years, whatever your cost was to repair that bridge today, it's multiple times that five years from now. Once the road starts to go, if you're not on it right away, you're now having to repair the bed of the road in addition to the surface. So, you know, this is, we're turning a dollar of local money into $4, $5 of total projects. Also, with the $5 fee, every dollar that we collect goes direct to engineering and actual road and bridge repair. None of this money is kept by the county. Every dollar is spent on actual work. Thanks.
We don't own any roads. And it's been my, kind of my angst about this. And before we had the roadmap program, we had a couple million dollars coming in. That was great. That money is not part of this new formula. So to me, particularly with trailers, as I said before, it's just, it's, it's onerous. And, and I applaud the great work that Ann's done and, and, and everything that you've, you've said. And certainly, I will grant that every dollar has been spent on this program. It's just not one that I can yet support. But I appreciate its, its value.
Certainly. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Okay. All right. Before we look for a motion, any public comment on this? Okay. Hearing none, seeing none. All right. We look for a motion then.
Motion to adopt Resolution Number Three of 2022, extending the ordinance for additional five years to collect an annual county fee of $5.
And also the allocations.
Oh, and also to utilize the expected funding to begin projects in Belfonte Borough, Curtin Township, Gregg Township, Millheim Borough, Rush Township, and Snowshoe Borough, with a total of $266,905.61 of $5 fee, local use funds, and $473,037.05 of municipal funding. Is that what you were looking for?
Sure. Yeah. And, yeah, yep, that's, that works. So I'll, I'll, I'll second that? Yes. Okay. All right. So the motion is to approve Resolution Three of 2022 and the fee for local use allocations. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion is carried with two votes in favor, one vote against. Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Ann.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll turn it over to Margaret for spring township request.
Yes, this morning, an application for your consideration. It's a liquid fuels application to PennDOT from Spring Township for the paving of Route 746 Locust Street in the amount of $24,000.
Okay. Any questions on this? All right. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve Spring Township's liquid fuels application to PennDOT.
Seconded. Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. Thank you, Margaret. Commissioner, the check run.
Sure. A just slightly smaller than average check run in the amount of $1,295,654.23. The check of the week is to the North Central Highway Safety Grant, which Ann is probably have some familiarity with. Yet another example of where Center County Government supports local transportation needs throughout the county. So we'd like to make the motion to approve the check run dated February 4th.
Seconded. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on the check run? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. We have no administrative report today, no letters of support. Commissioner Dershowitz, any voter registration report?
We have one. Today, there are 105,119 registered voters in Center County. That's up 11 from last report. We have 44,105 Democratic registrants, 147 Green Party. Let's see, we have 664 Libertarian, and 14,166 no affiliation, and 42,175 Republican voters. And I have another note on here from the elections to. And I have another note on here from the Elections Department. Oh, independent voters, there are 1,287. So I want to put that on there. So it leaves the all other parties at 3,862. And of that 3,862 other non-major parties, we have the Reform Party in Center County. The Reform Party has one registered voter, so I want to recognize them. And the precinct highlight of the week is precinct number 54, which is Haynes Township. They vote at the Aaron'sburg Civic Club. And in precinct 54, in the last election, there were 793 total registrants. There were 295 ballots cast, which led to a percentage turnout of 37.20%. And the folks that make it happen in precinct 54 is Patricia Valentine is the judge of elections. The minority inspector is Jane Van Heist. The majority inspector is Valerie Weaver, and the clerks are Harry Ward and Diane Ward. And I'm presuming that's probably husband and wife, so we want to thank them as well. And thanks to the Civic Club for allowing us the opportunity to take advantage of their facility, and we'll see you in just a short while.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Any announcements that we'd have to make today? Okay, any executive sessions?
Yes, the Board of Commissioners met an executive session on Friday, February 4th, from 3:30 to 4:03 p.m. to discuss a personnel issue.
Any questions, please?
Just to clarify, the bridge inspection program you spoke about here, that was in the works for a while. That's not a result of what's happened in Pittsburgh?
No, that's been, that was started, I believe, in 2017 and 2018 with grants that we received those years. Yep, so this is a continuation of that.
And it's done with PennDOT policies, the PennDOT regulations, the bridge inspection program?
Yes, that's correct. Yes, it's, if you want to add any clarity to it, Ann, that might be appreciated, just so we're on, would you mind at the podium? No, sure, no worries. Yep, thank you.
This is part of the bridge bundle, the multimodal bridge bundle, projects that were awarded in 18 and 19. And as part of those projects, we are required to have inspection services for those contracts.
So this dates back years ago, then?
Yes, yes. It takes a while to get our bridges fixed.
Are there other bridges on a list waiting for inspection in Center County?
So we have bridges inspected in Center County that is under a separate contract, and they are generally inspected once or twice a year. It depends on their condition. We actually have very few that are inspected more frequently than once a year.
Okay. Thank you. Officer, you alluded to about the ongoing cases involving redistricting or mail-in, or is there anything in the process to prepare for spring primaries that's been delayed on the county level? Or are you still moving forward as the election date will be the election date?
There have been no delays. I think there are things in the calendar that will, in March and April, that if we don't hit, if certain petition information from the state isn't forthcoming, and the lines are not forthcoming, March or April, then we're going to start to see some delays. But the courts are, it's, you know, there's a process. The courts are going to work its way through, and we'll see March or April if there's going to be any delays when it comes to the primary.
I would doubt that the primary is going to be delayed. There might be, as Michael indicated, some, there are some indication that we might have to push back some of the petition periods if indeed those lines are not drawn by the time set, which is coming up here very quickly. So there's going to be some challenges for us, though, and we kind of saw it in this RFP. By not knowing exactly what's going on, a lot of these folks, you know, the uncertainty is never a good thing when you're trying to do business. But particularly in the Elections Office, where we have so many moving parts, we do need some level of certainty here sooner rather than later.
The silver lining is that the petition period for this election cycle, all the petitions are turned in in Harrisburg. So unlike a municipal election, or when county row officers are, the petitions come into the Elections Office here, so our staff doesn't have to deal with that. So we're just, basically, the state's going to send us at a certain point the candidates that are on the ballot. But to go to Commissioner Dershowitz's point, you know, it's, I think also, the Elections Office is sort of, it's used, we're used to this. You know, we're used to a little bit of, you know, bumps in the road as we approach that final finish line. So, you know, again, you know, stay tuned.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 10:54.
All those in favor say aye. Aye. Motion carries.